Okay, let's go ahead and get ready, get ready. Yeah, come on in. Okay, great. Okay, let's get, welcome tonight, everybody. We got a, we got a packed house. I'm glad you guys are here and looking forward to hearing from you. So, let's start off with tonight's prayer and stand for the pugilization of the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time. Please grant us the power to be servants of you and your kingdom, but also of our county. Please give us the wisdom to, to make wise decisions, to be there for those who are in need, and to just, just spread your, your love and your word throughout Talbot County. Jesus is most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
The agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that was great. Okay, well, like I say, welcome everybody this evening. So, let's start off with the agenda. Council has had the agenda in front of them. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I have a motion to, thank you, a motion to reconsider the discussion of July, the July 21st, 2023 letter from the Maryland Department of the Environment, and the request for direction on how we should proceed.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Counselor President, she wants to inject that into item number, making that item number 11, and moving the county manager report to item number 12 and on down.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion second to put that on the agenda. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Any, any, any other changes? Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes. Minutes of August 8th are before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Disbursements of August 15th and August 22nd, we've had a chance to take a look at them. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so, first thing up tonight is our proclamation of National Preparedness Month. You want to come on out?
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Brian LaKate's Director of Emergency Services. I'd like to introduce Geneva Shaffel. She is our Division Chief of Emergency Management. So, this is a great opportunity to be before council and before the community to talk about emergency preparedness. I'll, I'll turn it over to Geneva to talk a little bit about that.
Sure, thank you for having me. I'm Geneva Shaffel. This National Preparedness Month happens every September, and we are approaching hurricane season. This week has been very active, so it's very timely. And thought it was a great time to remind our community the importance of preparedness. Our county works really hard and progressive with all of our partners across stakeholders, private, nonprofit, public, to prepare all year long. A couple of things that the community can do, they can visit ready.gov. It's a federal resource that has a long list of preparedness items from natural to man-made hazards. We offer Talbot alerts here, Talbot County Citizen Alerts. That is our reverse 911 where we can reach out to the public, notify you of weather emergencies, other emergencies that are going on. And then also, we have preparedness materials on our talbotdes.org website. I also wanted to take this time to give a plug to our planning and zoning folks. They work really hard all year long to keep up our community rating system here in Talbot County, and what that does for our residents is give them discount premium insurance rates on flood insurance. So, this is also the time to pull out your insurance policies, know what's in your insurance policies, and make sure that you are prepared for a storm season, as we're coming to a peak here in September.
Okay, that's great. Council?
Just want to thank you for coming in and making the public aware of this, so it's very important, and to remind me to check my insurance as well. That's a good point.
Okay.
Thank you for being here and giving us this insight.
We just see time and time again how you, how you are helping the community in this, and with this awareness, helping the community help itself. So, thank you.
Geneva, Brian, thanks you guys for what you do. Geneva, I, I love your, I love your emails. They're very thorough, let everyone know exactly what's going on. I want to highlight too, the reverse 911. If anyone hasn't done that, please do that. Anything from a weather emergency to the events we had a couple of weeks ago, you guys do a phenomenal job with, with keeping us informed. So, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Can I do one more shameless plug? We also, we do a lot of preparedness in our side of the house, but also for the community. We are about to launch our Fall Community Emergency Response Training. I have like three more spots left. You can go on our website and Facebook to find out more information, but you get seven weeks of me talking about all preparedness things, as well as our local first responders help teach the course, disaster preparedness, basic medical things. So, we have a couple of spots left if anyone's interested.
Okay, great. Mr. Sam?
Well, thank you, Mr. Counselor President. Now, what I would say is Talbot County has always been very aggressive when it comes to the issue of preparedness. We can look around the country right now and see evidence of the importance of preparedness. We can look into Hawaii, we can look at Southern California. We all know that we, we live on the coast of Chesapeake Bay. Much of our, our community is out in the Bay Hundred, which is out in the Chesapeake Bay, so we're very prone to flooding. I would like to just praise Geneva and Brian, but more importantly, or as importantly, the community that takes it serious. And so, an informed community is a, is a strong community. So, the key is, is to connect with emergency services today, on a sunny day, so that when the storm clouds come in, you're connected, you can get timely information, and we can respond to help, and more importantly, you can take actions ahead of time to protect yourself. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read this into the record, please?
Proclamation National Preparedness Month, September 2023. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, each September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools. And whereas this event aims to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. And whereas during the month of September, the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services, DES, will urge residents to take measures to help ensure they and their families are better prepared for emergencies, both natural and man-made, thereby building a more resilient community. And whereas preparing and planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve community resilience. And whereas throughout the year, the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services promotes emergency preparedness by maintaining preparedness information on the Talbot County website, by giving presentations throughout the community on the importance of preparedness, by providing printed information to groups, agencies, and citizens, by encouraging community-based training on how to be prepared and how to assist one's neighbors in emergencies, by connecting with residents and visitors electronically via social media, a smartphone app, and mass notification services, and by maintaining the Talbot County Emergency Operations Plan and Talbot County Community Resilience and Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas the County Council of Talbot County officially recognizes the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services and its community partners, including the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the Talbot County Department of Social Services, the Talbot County Health Department, Talbot County Public Schools, our volunteer fire departments, and law enforcement agencies, as well as the many other volunteer and civic organizations that routinely offer their invaluable services to our community. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Preparedness Month in Talbot County, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 22nd day of August in the year of our Lord, 2023.
That, thank you, Madam Secretary. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
You've done it every year. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda here, we have a presentation of, is it El, Elga's Army?
Elgin.
Yes, yes. Come on up. Yep. I see you brought your army here. Yes, yes. That's good. Anybody that would like to come up, please come up.
I like the swift chair. All right, go ahead. Um, hi, my name is Elgin Holly. I'm 17 years old, a senior, and if you don't know me, at 15, I had a brain aneurysm, which caused a hemorrhagic stroke. It all happened on August 18th, 2021, during EHS field hockey tryouts. I was having a good practice, although it was really hot. I was sure I was going to be the starting goalkeeper on the varsity team, a dream of mine since I was in kindergarten. At about 8:30, I think, I took a drink of water, and then in an instant, I took a knee and fell to the ground. It was at that time, my aneurysm ruptured, and I was taken by ambulance to Easton Hospital, and then lifelighted to Johns Hopkins. I do not remember the helicopter ride, and I was really confused when I woke up, like, where am I, what am I doing here? I could not walk, talk, or move my right side. I could just grunt or make noises to try and signal that my body hurt. It took almost two weeks to regain my speech ability, but speaking was just the first step into recovery. When I left Johns Hopkins, they put me in an inpatient center at Baltimore called Kennedy Creaker. I grew up to love that place. I'm not going to explain to you all the stuff that happened to me there, but when I left, I could sit up, walk, and move Kevin. That's what I call my arm or hand. All thanks to occupational and physical therapy. I set goals each week and achieved each and every one of them while in KAI. And on November 6th, I walked out of my KAI on my own. I was already crying, leaving this part of my life, but then I started to cry even more when I was surprised by my brother at the entrance to give me a hug. It was a very emotional moment. From there, I entered KAI's intensive outpatient program because I was making such gains. So, I got to work, and I haven't stopped since. I was about three, it was about 3:00 AM in the hotel in Baltimore while, while I was looking out on city, and that's when it hit me. I will never play field hockey again, and that's when I finally broke down. Field hockey has been a huge part of my life for so long, and for it to go to ways just like that, no gift could get me close to what field hockey has given or meant to me. It's given me family, it gave me love, and it gave me an outlet to forget out all about my troubles, troubles. In May, I qualified for Make-A-Wish, and with a little brainstorming with my parents, I decided a turf field. I had, I thought my aneurysm was, have only given me pain and hurt, but it gave me something else that I, that I was unexpected, perspective. It helped me reimagine what I could be, and now I'm managing field hockey, and it stings a lot. I have to let one of my goalies wear my gear, and although it is painful, it is the right thing. I go, I think of my goalie gear as a second persona, and my goalie gear said, "Let me play, let me go," and I did. And nothing is easy. A wise person once said, "You know how wildflowers are normally pitiful, ugly? Well, some are beautiful. You just got to look for them under all the bush." The damaged stuff leaves superficial scars all over your body, but if you dig deep, you will see something amazing. Below all my scars, I am me. This is me. You can't take away what's already been put into my mind, a don't give up mindset. And my coach, Andrea Chandler, said, "This is only temporary," and then she scribbled it on the inside of my shirt, my Elgin Army shirt. And my stroke is forever, but the damage that's been done, it's, it's only short-lived. This is only temporary. And although no one prepared me for what I was going to go through, and there was really no way I could have been prepared for what was about to happen, I still handled it with ferocity and finesse, and I still did the impossible, and that is enough. I continue to work on my confidence. My aneurysm has definitely sent me back, but I try to remember every coach's words, like, "Keep going, come on, don't you give up on me." In that moment, were you, were you already about to give up, but then you see the coach hasn't given up on you. Nobody gave, gave up on me. And look where it's gotten me. I pushed myself to the limit by, by just getting out of bed, and I wouldn't be the same person if I took no for an answer. We all make mistakes, and I'm no stranger to them, but this, the field seems right. It is right. As a goalkeeper, I was, I, I was just there to block shots, but now I'm, now I see I'm part of the bigger picture. I was destined to do something greater than myself. My friends, my teammates deserve something more than a simple thank you. Therefore, I ask you to please think about how you can support my wish. Please help me give back to our community that has given so much love to me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That was beautiful. That was beautiful. You, you've got, you definitely are, you're, you should be very proud. You've got a, a lot of, what's the word? I'm kind of, you're, the strength that you have, have told us, and the strength that you've got surrounds you means a lot. You're a very strong woman, very positive. I think a lot of people need a little bit of you in, in everybody. That, that's for sure, you know, so. But I know, I know Dave, you, you brought that, brought this to us, so you want to say a little bit?
Absolutely. Well, Jen, you had a few words first?
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely.
Like, I'm a teacher, so I like to talk.
Okay, no, no problem, no problem.
I would be glad to have.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
I'm pretty loud when I get going, so.
That's, that's okay, that's okay.
Good evening. My name is Jen Holly, otherwise known as Mom. I'm here to talk to you about Elgin, a little bit about her, and the Make-A-Wish. Elgin's story about how she ended up as a field hockey goalkeeper may be better told by Coach Andrea Chandler. However, the short version is that she rotated in goal during a soccer game when she was in third grade. She had never played soccer before, and Andrea, who did not even know her, was there watching her own daughter play. Anyway, Elgin ran all in to block a kick. Coach Andrea described what she witnessed from Elgin at that moment as fearless. The next fall, when Coach Andrea was drafting players for her Parks and Rec team, Elgin, only in the fourth grade at that time, was on the list as the full-time goalkeeper. It was that season, 2014, that Elgin found her passion. She never missed a game, never missed a practice. She was one of the first on the field and the last to leave. From that moment on, she was committed. That was her it. I'm not sure how many of you in this room have a son or daughter who has found their passion, their it. I can say that there's nothing greater as a parent than watching your kiddo find it and want to spend their energy, effort, doing it. And that is what she, we did from 2014 to 2021. Parks and Rec, travel leagues, tournaments, indoor/outdoor, college clinics, YouTube training videos, watching college field hockey, watching tape of her play, constructing backyard goals out of PVC pipe. That's all we did. And as Elgin shared, on August 18th, 2021, when Elgin was in the best shape of her life, positioned to be the starting goalie for her varsity high school team, a dream she had since she was little, she had a brain aneurysm while in goal at Easton High School. We never saw it coming. While I will never know how that felt for her, and I will never know how she feels being so forcibly robbed of her dream, I do know that she did not spend any time dwelling on it. She recognized early on that there was nothing good for her there. As she read, it was an emotional time. Instead, she looked ahead at what could be and worked every day fighting her way back, not gracefully, but gritfully. Elgin is a true warrior. She epitomizes courage, resilience, persistence, compassion, and yes, is completely fearless. Elgin's love for her sport and her teammates is obvious in how she conducts herself on and off the field. On the field, she is the first to take a knee, something we all noticed when she was very young. Off the field, she is the first to offer a hug. So, it should be no surprise to those who know E that she has made a selfish wish to support her fellow athletes in her community by asking Make-A-Wish for a turf field at Easton. I have been told a turf field has been discussed extensively through the years in this county, but it has not come to fruition. I am also sure the financial benefits of a turf field have been considered. Like turf fields Like turf fields may have a higher upfront cost, but they have lower maintenance costs per year and will maintain their appearance over the long term compared to grass, et cetera. Excuse me. The motivation behind Elgin's wish completely lies in her love for sport, her fellow athletes, and the recognition that to be competitive with our region, we need to practice and play on turf because they do. The truth is, the state of our fields do not allow for extra playing time or to be able to host regional tournament games, et cetera. And furthermore, they don't help make us as competitive with other teams who both practice and play on turf. As I'm sure you all are aware, in twenty nineteen, Queen Anne's County funded two turf fields to be built at Kent Island and Queen Anne's County High School. In addition to significant community support, much like you are seeing here tonight, it appears they were able to pay for the fields using open space funds, impact fees, and the county's capital project funds. So this raises questions to be answered maybe by this council, such as is it possible for our county to connect with Queen Anne's County and try to model the same plan? Do we actually have some of these monies available? And furthermore, are there any additional grants we can pursue? Your role in the success of this wish is vital. We absolutely need you. In addition, my hope would be that we would also include Parks and Rec in the process. I have also heard that Queen Anne's County has made so much money off renting their fields that they can replace and maintain their fields over the long term. If you have ever been to the DE Turf Center in Delaware, you know how lucrative that kind of place could prove to be for accounting. It could be a game changer for us. Ultimately, we believe the decision comes down to money and sheer will. While we don't have the money quite yet, I can say the Hollies certainly have the will, as do many of the coaches, athletes, and community members you see here tonight. And although Make-A-Wish is behind Elgin's wish one hundred percent, saying that her request is both moving and compelling and a beautiful thing to put into the world, the maximum support the foundation could offer is a very small fraction of the cost of a turf field. While Make-A-Wish may not be able to do the heavy lift with funding, they are a well-known entity with incredibly large networks who can provide considerable leverage in our quest for potential donors. On August fifteenth, we received very exciting news that Field Turf USA, the company that has provided Easton High School with the bid for the field, has reduced their estimate by one hundred thousand dollars in honor of Elgin's Make-A-Wish. Look at that, our first partner. After all, who wouldn't wanna partner with Make-A-Wish? And I would especially like to thank Sherri Hewitt, Chief Operating Officer of Make-A-Wish's Mid-Atlantic Region, for taking time out of her busy schedule to join us in support this evening. So what else have we done to this point? Elgin and I spoke to TCPS board members on July nineteenth with strong support from Elgin's Army whereby each board member indicated their support and encouragement of this project during their public comment at the end of the meeting. Elgin also made the front page of the Star Democrat on Sunday, July thirtieth, where we shared much of her story. I hope you saw it. I met with Bunk Duncan of the Midshore Community Foundation, where he supported creating a fund for this project. He was also encouraged to know I was already on the agenda to speak here and encouraged me to speak at the Easton Town Council, which we are scheduled to do on September fifth. In addition, we have plans to contact WBOC, the Talbot Spy, and ninety-four-three Winx FM. In addition, I am working with Jay Kilborn to create a steering committee made up of members of our community to help guide us in our fundraising efforts. We are hoping at least one of you from this council will help guide us in this process or even consider being a member of the committee. The challenge for us is that Elgin will be eighteen at the end of November and may likely time out of her wish if we cannot show significant funding progress or find committed funding partners to work with us in this effort. Ultimately, I am here to do nothing else but make Elgin's wish come true. I have no political agenda. I don't care who gets the credit and I will not be distracted by these types of issues. Make no mistake, this wish is not for her, but for those athletes coming after her in her community. Nothing is impossible. Look at Elgin. Listen to her story. Look at her army. How can you not be inspired? Thank you for your time and thanks so much to Elgin's Army and Make-A-Wish for their unwavering support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elgin, first, thank you for, for sharing your story again, right? And, and continuing that. It's, it's courageous and nothing short of. Jen, thank you for your comments as well. Um, it was, it was, uh, it was great to see you guys as well as all of Elgin's Army out there and, uh, sharing that in front of the board and excited to hear about their support. Had some meetings already sits on, on this and I, I think things look good, right? So this would obviously have to come across, uh, for us for a, uh, for a capital project for, for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, I know I'm excited and I'm, I hope that TCPS brings that to us, which I know I will be in full support of. I, I, I couldn't agree more with everything you said about the, you know, the, uh, you just, just with where that would put us in, in ath- athletic program in Talbot County. Uh, not only could, you know, will, will Easton benefit from this, but Saint Michael's Sports could benefit from this as well. Uh, the county, uh, like I said, possibly even, you know, out, out in the private space. Uh, this is, could, will be nothing but a, a great thing for Talbot County and, uh, you'll have my full support when it comes to, no, no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Well, Elgin, Ms. Holly, thank you. Uh, and I too see your inspiration is, is contagious. Uh, your confidence, uh, your courage in, in putting this together, the, the ambition to take on such a big project uh, to, that will be, uh, that will have a lasting impact on, on this community. Um, so, thank you and I, I certainly look forward to next steps on this.
Um, I'm just so impressed. I don't know what to say. Um, I so admire the resiliency, the grit, the determination and the support that you have engendered in this community is amazing. Um, I think I'm, you know, also, um, impressed about the writing. And, um, I think that's been very good and, um, I'm very much in support of what you're doing, all of you. Thank you.
So I'll echo with my, what my colleague said, Elgin. I, you know, thank you for sharing your story. I had not heard about your story. Um, very impressed. I mean, words that Ms. Milky just said. I was sitting here writing them down as you were just speaking and it was courageous. I mean, being courageous for all other teenagers in Talbot County and then also grit and determination. I mean, just to see that in you at a young age, we don't even see that sometimes in grown adults. So, you know, that grit and determination, keep it going. Um, I echo with, you're her mother?
Yes.
So echo what Mom said in regards to, um, reaching out to Queen Anne's County. So however, you know, we can do that or have Preston from Parks and Rec do that um, to see if open space would, um, be a way to have funding for the turf field and also any additional grant opportunities that may be an option, um, for this as well. So thank you again and keep going with your grit and your determination and just like Mom said, nothing is impossible.
Well, we're so proud of you and I think, um, I would like you guys to come on up because we, I think council, this is a, a special lady and I would like to go ahead and take a picture with her around here.
And let your whole army out there?
Do you want the army?
Assemble!
That's what I was gonna ask the question.
Good. Look at this.
Make sure you have a hat.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan, I, I doubt we track these things, but we may have just set a new record up here.
I think we did. I, I did. Yep. We set a record. Yes, yes. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. That was great. We really appreciate that and we, uh, definitely wish her luck and I definitely, we're gonna support that. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation on Talbot County Puppet Schools on Design with Chapel East. Is, um, is Mr. Schaefer, is he here or? Is Kevin here? He, is he? He might be out in the hallway. Yeah. Or scared to come in. You know, could be one of the two. I didn't, I didn't see him. Yeah, I didn't see him. I got, okay, that's fine. Yeah.
I think, I think the chair can carry on and.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. Okay. So, uh, Mr. Schaefer will be here in a little while, so we'll just skip to the next one. So we're gonna skip to the, um, the, uh, public hearing. Um, so, uh, for the, um, community block grant. Yep. There, hey, there she is. Sorry about that. How you doing, Mary Kay?
Good.
Good, good. You wanna go ahead and, and tell us all about that?
Sure. Thank you very much for having me here this evening.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm here with Saint Vincent de Paul and they are a counseling center. They provide assistance. They have a food pantry. They have a thrift store and it's all operated by volunteers who serve those who are most in need in our community. In May, I was before you for a public hearing requesting community development block grant funding for this project for a one thousand nine hundred and twenty square foot addition to their facility. And we received approval for that in July. Uh, we're before you again today asking for additional funds as they are proposing to expand the project to a twenty-four hundred square foot addition. Um, and that would also include additional parking area and stormwater management and, uh, all those things that are associated with an addition on the facility. Um, so we're seeking additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the community development block grant funding. So with that request, along with the originally approved four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and the one hundred and eighty thousand that Saint Vincent de Paul is putting toward this project and the six thousand in county administrative, the new project total will be eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Okay.
So after today, our next steps will be the completing the environmental review, hopefully a finding of no significant impact and requesting the funds. And we hope to do that, have that completed and submitted by early September.
Okay, great.
Then they can start their site plan review, their building permit applications, the bid selection and all those things that are necessary to get the project moving. So we're before you today seeking public comment as well as council support for the additional funding for this project.
Okay. That sounds great. Um, okay, so like you said, it's a public, um, hearing and, um, what we'll do, if anybody would like, we'll give you three minutes to come on up. If you have any, um, uh, any, uh, anything to say about the, uh, the grant? So, and I'll give you five minutes if you're representing somebody. So, okay, on thi- on this side over here, would anybody like to come up and talk about the grant? Okay. Anybody here on the right like to come up and talk about the grant? Yep, yep. Yep. Welcome, guys.
Hi, I'm Alex Handy. I'm, I'm president of the Saint Vincent de Paul Society.
Yes, sir.
And this is Mike, one of our board members, Mike Klein.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Sounds important, doesn't it?
It, it really does. It really does.
Um, the bottom line is that back in May, we screwed up. Um, when we, we loo- we looked at doing an expansion of the facility to deal with the problems that were in front of us. And then when that was approved with a tentative approval, we, we said, you know what? Maybe we should look farther than our nose here. Maybe we should see what's happening to this facility and how can we, um, put it in a position to deal with the demand that's coming at us. And we came up, um, I, I guess every, maybe everybody in the room, uh, do you know the rule of seventy-two? It's an old math trick. It says, how, and you use it in investing. If you're making eight percent a year, then you divide that into seventy-two and then in nine years, you know, your money doubles. Well, Saint Vincent de Paul went through that exercise with, uh, food pantry growing at twenty and thirty percent. The, um, the, um, supporting, um, um, education, um, rent, utilities, healthcare, all those things growing as much as forty percent. We'll divide those numbers in your rule of seventy-two and you can find out that real quick, the demand at Saint Vincent de Paul is gonna double within years. So we then said, okay, let's look at what's in front of us. How much can we expand the facility? Cause we're certainly gonna need a larger facility, a larger thrift store to support those expenditures, a larger food bank, a larger, what we call Saint Vincent Advisors, where people come in for counseling and we distribute money and, um, whatnot. And so, that's why I grew from six twenty to eight hundred plus or minus. And, uh, so we thought, I wonder if they'd go for an increase. So, um, we talked to Mary, Mary Kay and she said, why not give it a try? So that's why we're here.
That's great. That's great. Yep.
Yeah, as Mike said.
Yep.
First six months of this year, and if you've been to a grocery store lately, you'll understand why. Our food pantry, it's, uh, up thirty-three percent. Our financial assistance, um, and I know, Chuck, you're on the, uh, Neighborhood Service Center Board. Um, they're sending a lot more people to us because they're overwhelmed and we're ge- we're giving out money like, you know, drunken sailors. It's just unbelievable how much, uh, the demand has increased. A lot of homeless people, people that can't pay their rent. And you know, when there was a moratorium on paying rent, uh, during COVID and the u- utilities couldn't be shut off and all, that's over. That honeymoon period is over and they're back and, and hugely asking for funds. So, um, we're just anticipating what this is going to mean in the future. And we're very grateful for the previous, um, you're, you're going about for us on the previous grant. We're just hoping that we can, uh, meet the demand that we know is coming.
Okay. Okay, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak about it? Okay, Madam Secretary, at this time, I'll do, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yep, okay. All right, Mary Kay, we'll close the public hearing, okay?
I was a sailor, but not a drunken sailor, but I definitely know the benefit of this and what they're providing to our community and it's greatly appreciated. So we welcome the opportunity to go back and try to get some additional funding and make sure we support this group.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Right, Council. Yep. I don't, I don't think so.
No, we just need a public.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all we needed. Yep. Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, I seen, I seen Kevin out there. Yep, Mr. Schaefer, want to come, come on in? Get him, come on in. Get back on track here. Yep.
Thank you so much, President Callahan.
I'm glad you showed up.
Yeah, I apologize, everyone. I did not know the meeting, time had changed.
No, no big deal. So, welcome.
So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Council.
You want to tell everybody who you are, please?
Yes. So my name's Kevin Schaefer and I am Director of Operations for Talbot County Public Schools. And with me tonight is Ms. Lindsay Hill. She is with a representative from Whiting Turner. And I have Peter Weinbrenner from Hoard Copeland and Mock. And so I'm going to kind of start this off this evening first by letting the Council know that we are here this evening to request consideration and support for the, the first formal design submission to the state related to the Chapel District Elementary School renovation and addition project. So, so obviously I've introduced us here this evening. But what the plan is, is that we're going to kind of walk through what the, the basic parameters are related to the schematic design. And Peter is going to be doing the heavy lifting this evening, so I get to sit back for a moment. And so, we will open that up. Yeah, I'll take, I'll go for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah.
I can go into as much or as little detail as you want. I'm assuming a fairly high level.
We don't have to go too detailed. Okay.
I'm good with that. All right, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay.
So, we wanted just a little bit about the project background, show you the design, and then Lindsay will just talk to you briefly about what the cost is. So it'll be fairly quick. Go ahead. Just remind everyone about the scope. So the original building was built 1952. It's had additions and renovations over the last few years, the last couple of decades. It's about a 19 and a half acre site. There's been a previous feasibility study and a program ad spec developed that we're working from. So we're looking at a full renovation of the school for a design capacity of 431. We're also looking to create additions to allow for expansion of certain instructional spaces, including the early childhood spaces. A lot of the requirements of the, of the new blueprint in Maryland require additional spaces for the early childhood students. And then site improvements as well. Just a quick look at the schedule. This is driven by the state's funding schedule. So we have to hit an early September submission of our schematic design, followed by an early November submission for the next phase. Construction documents will be done in the spring and we'll be bidding and starting construction then at the end of the school year. We held some public meetings and we got public input on the design you're about to see, which was very helpful for us to help make sure the school was meeting the community's needs. So the design itself, this is the existing site. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the school just outside of Cordova. And so we're going to be expanding on the school next slide up to the northwest of the site and as well as to this northeast. And those, the northeast addition is where the entry is now. It'll be a new library, media center and new entry in the back. We'll have the Critchlow Atkins program as well as additional mechanical support space. And then a small addition in this plan on the upper left that allows for the the expansion of all of the kindergarten and pre-K rooms from current size to proposed size. So this is just a quick aerial view. We can go to the next one. Of the proposed, we're going to try to match the existing school as much as possible. We do want to try to create a little bit more vibrant front to the school where the new library is without obviously impacting the budget to do so. By putting that program there, we're allowing that to be an after-school, after-hours use by the community as well as the existing gymnasium and cafeteria, which will continue to function. And then, of course, the fields have great community use outside of school hours as well. Next image should be just a very conceptual idea of the new entry and library. This is looking at it sort of from the intersection of the bus loop and car drop-off. By the way, back on the site plan, those will be improved. They currently mingle. We're going to separate them, keep the professional drivers away from the amateur drivers so that there's not a whole lot of problem there. So this would be a view of the new library on the corner and then where the canopy pokes out, that's the new entrance into the main administration area. And then there's a second entrance just past that new addition for the bus loop entry. And then the Critchlow Atkins addition would be further to the right, back towards the playfields.
For the cost estimate during the SD phase, the schematic phase, we try to make sure we separate what we're discussing with the new addition as far as to what we're discussing with the renovation portion of the project. So, at this phase, while we narrow down finishes and final site improvements, we try to incorporate all the discussions that we've had to date into the budget. And we believe we are maintaining our current budget as it stands.
Great. Good. Good. Okay, yep.
So yeah, so that, that is the very quick abridged version of the schematic design submission. We could certainly answer any questions that the Council may have. Should there be any?
Sure. Okay, Council?
I have a question.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Could, could you go over the, the, the goals for the expansion of kindergarten space? I know that this is a response to changes in standards. What impact will it have on, on classroom size, on the number of pupils?
So there's a standard equation, Mr. Lesher, for the classroom sizes. But the, the addition associated with, with the, with this project would primarily be to meet the goal of having three classrooms per grade level. So that, that is the goal that we're shooting forward to increase the capacity of the school a little bit while trying to maintain a budget that's reasonable and that gets full participation from the state.
Mr. Lesher, if I may, the, the current kindergarten and pre-K rooms are undersized by state standards. So we're going to be expanding those, which accounts for part of the addition, as well as adding two additional pre-K classrooms to meet those standards. So there's, the, the rooms will hold the state prescribed, no more than. So I think it's 20 at pre-K, 22 at kindergarten and 23 at the primary grades. And the rooms are being sized for that number. But, so that's, that's the goal.
For the, the size for 22 for the kindergarten?
Correct. And that's the state, state recommended size of number of students. The rooms will be sized for 22, which are, they're not currently sized for 22, so it'll be made larger.
And is, is that where we are now?
I'm sorry.
Is that, is, are those, are those levels where we are now?
Number of students.
At Chapel?
So, I don't know for sure on that one. Right now, I believe that our current enrollment is around 346 students. I'm not exactly sure what for the upcoming school year, what the classroom size is. I would assume that it's probably a little bit under that at this point.
Thank you.
Sure.
The grade level is to grade six, correct?
Grade five.
There has been some interest in the community of maybe expanding this at some time to be a middle school, so six, seven and eight. Is there an aspect that it can be done with this building? Or would that involve a whole new major project?
So, I'll answer part of that. I'll let Peter answer the other part to it. So, so as of right now, from the state's perspective, this campus is a PK, pre-K through five campus. And that's what this project is addressing only. But we did hear the, the community's, you know, want for that. And so Peter can talk about where, where the proposed location would be.
So first of all, we, we, we always build in the opportunity for an expansion of any kind in the future. So on the upper left corner, where you see that small red rectangle, that corridor would extend further out and pick up additional classrooms, should there be an addition needed. And that would, that would support probably, say, three to five classrooms, which would allow for, say, another section of each of the current grades. Now, if it becomes a middle school, there would be additional programs on top of that. Or a PK eight, for instance. We've done a number of those across the state. And there are certainly places where you want to separate the elementary, middle. So that would be a far larger addition. The site could probably hold it and without dramatically impacting the, the elementary school. There would be other additions besides classrooms that would be needed at that point. So the, so the short answer is there's, there's a location for a small modest addition in the future. And there's, there would be room on the site for a larger one. It would impact fields and things, so that would have to be addressed. But, but to Kevin's point, we're focusing on the pre-K five.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So I would be asking the Council for a letter of support for this submission to the state. And, and just so the Council's aware, there's, this won't be the last time that you see the three of us. There's two more submissions throughout this upcoming year that we will be back to, to request support. But typically, the Council, if, if approved, would provide a letter that would basically just say that, that you're supporting this pending available, you know, funding in the future.
Okay. All right, then. Okay. Is there, is there a motion for a support letter?
I'll, I'll move the letter of support.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second for a support letter. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayne?
Aye.
Okay. All right, guys, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right.
And I'm sorry, I don't have exit out there.
That's all right. That's all right. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, introduction to legislation.
A bill to amend Chapter 11 of the Talbot County Code, Alcoholic Beverages, Regarding Operations of Class I Alcohol Dispensary Bistro's.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, do you want to go ahead and explain the quick version of what we're thinking about doing there?
Sure. So this is a bill that was requested by Zach Smith on behalf of the Ward Room. It's intended to address some seating issues in the establishment. And I believe Mr. Smith is here and can give a little bit more background as to the request.
Okay, that's good. Is, is Mr. Smith here? There, there he is. Yep.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening.
Zach Smith on behalf of Blue Point Hospitality and the Ward Room. And as Mr. Thomas said, the Ward Room would like to do two things. They'd like to be able to open a little earlier than they currently are and they'd like to expand their seating. And so we proposed a bill that would allow them to open at 9:00 AM versus 11:00 AM. And that would allow us to seek expansion of the seating area through the Liquor Board Review and Approval Process by that body. And so that's what this bill would do.
Okay, that's great. Okay, at this point, it's just introduction. So, Madam Secretary, you want, you want to raise your hand if you're support?
So introduce the Vice, Mr. Callahan, Step and Hayne.
Okay. Can you go ahead and announce the bill number in, in public hearing?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1547. Public hearing will be on Tuesday, September 12th at 5:30 PM.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Eligible vote for vote. Madam Secretary, could you read Bill 1545, please?
Bill Number 1545, a bill to amend Chapter 20 of the Talbot County Code, Board of Appeals for Clarity and Consistency in Regarding the Board of Appeals' Proceedings, Forms, Hearings and Procedures.
Okay. All right. Mr. Thomas, can you go ahead and sort of explain the, the two amendments?
Yes, so there are two, two amendments, both of which were requested by Councilmember Milkie. The first proposed amendment relates to administrative appeals from decisions of the Short Term Rental Review Board. The, the language is currently drafted and, and the bill provides that decisions of the Short Term Rental Review Board would remain in effect until the Board's decision on appeal is rendered. So if the Board, if the Short Term Rental Board had issued somebody a license, they would be able to use that license even while there's an appeal. The, the language proposed by Councilmember Milkie would provide that, that the, what the approval from the Short Term Rental Board would be stayed pending the appeal. So instead of the license being active during the appeal period...
It would not be active.
It would not be active during the appeal period.
I got you. Okay. And is that the only one? Is that, is that the only amendment?
That, that's Amendment Number One.
Okay.
And do you want me to discuss Amendment Number Two before you vote on Amendment Number One? Or do you just want to take them each in order?
Why don't you take them one at a time?
Yeah, we can get one at a time. Yep.
On Amendment Number One, actually, there are two parts to that. That if there is an appeal of a Short Term Rental Board decision for an initial permit for a short-term rental, that would be stayed pending the appeal process.
An application for a new short-term rental license.
But if there were some complaint filed and it goes through a process of an existing license, that would remain in effect and not stay pending the process for consideration of that issue, correct? So there's a, there's a distinction between that which requires the issue, not, the license not to be issued versus it continuing in effect if it has already been issued.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
So it, it maintains the status quo before the whatever event it is being appealed?
Yes.
Okay. And at this time, I see we have the Chair here. Would you like to come up and, and voice your opinion on this? Because you're the one that's going to be in the middle of this. Please come up.
I'm Callahan, Chairman of the Board of Appeals, and I have with me Luke Dorsey, who's the Vice Chairman.
Yep, yep.
Actually, this, this would affect the Short Term Rental Review Board and not us so much. Right now, we, we're bound by the rules that it's not stated. If, if they appeal, the applicant or the licensee can go ahead and start renting his property. This really wouldn't affect the Board of Appeals. So I, I think this is, this would affect the Short Term Rental Review Board. But from my standpoint, from our, our standpoint, I don't think we would have any objection to this. Do you, Luke?
I don't.
It would, it would take one thing off our plate. I mean, it would be something that we wouldn't have to consider in an appeals hearing.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and...
Any, any other question from Council?
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, just have one question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Just get some clarity on Ms. Milkie's second part of that amendment. I wasn't quite clear on that. The, you said there was two parts to the amendment and I wasn't, the first part I understood, but the second part...
Yeah, this would only affect a new licensee, somebody who is just applied, yeah.
Right. A new license would not go into effect until it's gone through the appeal process and been approved. But if it's an existing license and it's being, you know, challenged or sanctioned, it would continue in effect.
Yeah, and that, and that's good because they would already have rentals probably lined up and that would have happened then, so.
Okay. Thank you.
With, with that, with that clarification...
Okay. All right, no problem.
Makes it good, I think.
Okay. Any other questions from Council? Any other discussion? Okay, so we want to go ahead and call the vote on Amendment, the First Amendment?
It needs to be introduced.
Oh, introduced. I'm sorry. Okay. Yep.
So show, you're looking for a show of hands to introduce?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Which amendment? Amendment one?
Amendment one. Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep.
So introduced by council?
Yep.
And now they vote on it.
Do you want to vote on it now or do you want to vote on it?
Yeah, we can. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Second one?
So Amendment Number Two, uh, amends, uh, Section Twenty, uh, dash four regarding proceedings and, uh, legal counsel for the board. Uh, currently, that's, uh, subsection, new, proposed new subsection F, which is existing language just re, uh, in a different section. Uh, states that the board can appoint its own attorney within budgetary limitations established by the council. Um, Ms. Milkie's proposed amendment would add the language. It says, notwithstanding that, but within budgetary limitations established by the council, the board shall engage an attorney not affiliated with the Office of Law in the event of an administrative appeal concerning a decision of the Planning Commission or the Short Term Rental Review Board in which an attorney affiliated with the Office of Law represented either of those bodies.
Okay. So what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, that actually would affect the Board of Appeals, uh, in our, in our choice of attorneys. We've, uh, our rules state that we have to have decisions out within thirty days. Uh, in the past, for, for years and years, the board has had problems with the attorney getting their decisions out within thirty days. Uh, not only required in our rules, it also affects the, uh, the applicant. If, if we approve his project, he can't start until our decision is issued. And he has eighteen months from that point to start his project. With their, our current attorney, who, who is a member of the McLeod Law Firm, we have, uh, I guess he's been, uh, our attorney now for close to a year. We have never missed a, a date. Our, our decisions are out in time. Uh, our decisions are written very well. They're concise to the point. Uh, the board has been extremely happy with the services, uh, supplied by Lance Young. It's also, in, in, in this community, it's hard to find an alwa, a lawyer on short term, uh, in, in a short term basis to, to fill in. First of all, they have to be available for that particular night of our meeting. Uh, we're limited. I mean, there's not, there's not a great number of attorneys on the eastern shore who handle these kind of cases, uh, and one that would not be, uh, have a conflict. It also becomes an ex, matter of expense because when we hire a new attorney, he has to start from, from ground one. He starts at the very beginning. So he has a lot of research. He or she has a lot of research.
Right.
Uh, and of course, the more time they spend doing research is billable hours. So it does run our cost up. It's hard to, first of all, it's hard to find somebody. Uh,
Yeah.
And somebody that we can rely on to get our decision out on time. Uh,
Okay.
It, it creates an issue. Now, we have been, we've been assured by our, our, uh, our council and by the McLeod Law Firm that there is no, there's a ruling from the Attorney General's office that there is no conflict, uh, in the, in this situation. There's things called a Chinese law that, uh, lawyers use in, in this case where members of the same firm are separated. They do not talk about the case. There, uh, there's no communication between them. So we've been assured that there's an Attorney General, uh, uh, letter that, that, uh, okays the, the, uh, the use of, uh, the attorneys that we are in these cases. Uh, I mean, obviously, if the council feels that we need to go out, we would certainly, we would certainly abide by whatever rules you impose on us.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, it works very well with the attorney we have now. We're very, we're very happy with him. Uh, and, uh,
Okay. Sounds good.
Any, do, start with hands for introduction, then we can get into discussion of merits.
Sure. Hands of, um, introducing. Raise the hands.
Introduced by, uh, Ms. Milkie.
Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. Yeah.
The genesis of this is the public's perception of whether there's a conflict in interest because the county attorney firm has represented the boards, um, on the decisions that they've made that are appealed to you. And it's my understanding historically, there had been independent counsel. I'm also aware of the problems that were encountered in terms of, you know, the timeliness or the availability of that counsel. It's my understanding that there is counsel, um, that is available that may be more, um, available on a timely basis than in the past. So I think that issue may have been addressed. The issue in terms of cost is, it's a balancing act. And I think that the transparency and the appearance of independence, um, has to be equally weighted. Um, and I think that it's just important that we have independent counsel viewing, um, the, the decision. As far as the AG's decision, it's an AG's decision. It's not a binding decision, in my humble opinion, of, you know, any of the, uh, the, the Supreme Court of Maryland or the Court of Appeals. So I think, you know, that was based on, I think it's St. Mary's County, maybe? I can't remember because I, I read it. I did read it. So I think that there, there is, there could be a difference. Um,
You're, you're, you're saying that the Attorney General's opinion says what we may do, but not what we must do?
Right. Yeah. There's been no, you know, decision by the appellate courts, um, in that regard that would be binding. So, um, so it's, you know, it can be considered, but it's not binding. So from that standpoint, I think all things considered, transparency, um, is the key word.
And, and the board, we, we certainly understand your concern with that. We, uh, the boards, the, the Short Term Rental Review Board has an attorney that's also rep, that represents the McLeod Law Firm. It's actually, the last case, there was really no reason to have the attorney from the Board of the, uh, Short Term Rental Review Board there because both other parties, there were two lawyers, one who represent the, the appellate and one who represents the appellate. So the case is argued by the license holder and by the people or person who is appealing the decision of the Short Term Rental Review Board. So each of those are represented by attorneys. And, uh, the, the decision and the ruling was that, that, that our, our law firm came up with was that the Short Term Rental Review Board does not need to be represented. Now, of course, that doesn't negate the fact that he represents the Short Term Rental Review Board at the original hearing. Besides that, the only thing I can say is we, we certainly, we rely on our advice of our council. Uh, the lawyer, the lawyer that the board hires does our decision and advises us in legal matters, which certainly could, could influence, uh, a decision. But he is not part of the decision of the Court of Appeals. Uh, if we, even if we go into executive session with him, we're not allowed to discuss, uh, the merits of the case or anything there. The only thing we question in those hearings or those meetings, uh, those closed meetings, when we, when we close the meeting to go into executive session is, uh, legal points. I mean, a point that whether, whether a prior decision from another court in the state, uh, pertains to this case or some legal point, we, there's never any discussion of the, uh, of the actual case or the merits of the case with our attorney. I understand that probably doesn't negate all the, the, uh, possibility that someone may look at it and say, gee, there's a conflict. There's a lawyer from the same firm that represents the Short Term Rental Review Board and the Board of Appeals. But, uh, even though it may be an appearance, it's, it, it does not affect the decision of the board.
Okay. Mr. Lusher? If, if I may ask Mr. Callahan a question here, uh, does, uh, has the, has council for the Board of Appeals, recused in, in the past within memory?
We did on one, in the first case that came up. We've had, uh, we've had two, uh, cases that came up, two that I remember offhand that came up with the Short Term Rental Review Board. And we did, the board decided in the first case that we would go and seek outside counsel. We did. We were, we were certainly satisfied with our representation. Our decision was close to the time, uh, that it was due. It was a greater expense than, than our normal counsel would have been.
So this, this is something that you have looked at in the past, that you've considered as part of your procedure?
And then after that, because it was, uh, and it was, uh, hard for us to find an attorney, uh, to represent us on this one case, we discussed it with our, with our legal counsel. He discussed it with, uh, the McLeod Firm. And we were assured that there was not a conflict and that they were, uh, they had been cleared. The letter from the Attorney General did give them the clearance to go ahead. Uh, that the Chinese wall was in, was in place. Uh, that there was no conflict within the firm for him to represent us on these cases. So on the advice of counsel, uh, the other case, we, we used our, our regular, uh, attorney.
Good. Thank you.
But then that is a decision from a firm who is representing both sides. That is, they're representing the, the, uh, original commission or group, uh, whether it was this, um, the, uh,
Well, in the second case.
Review Board. And then, so, I mean, I, I just see a conflict as an attorney. I just see a conflict in saying, oh, we don't have a conflict. We decided this, but we can decide this. And I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions. I'm just saying how it appears to the public that, you know, it's easy to say, well, we represented you below, but we don't have a conflict representing you for the Board of Appeals. And, and the public has, has been, you know, um, concerned about this.
In the, in the first case, uh, the Short Term Rental Review Board's attorney did appear at our hearing. In the second case, he, uh, he withdrew his application. So he did not appear at the hearing. And that was, that was the main impetus why we decided that we, uh, that we would have one advice of counsel and use our right counsel.
But wouldn't you agree that if this issue has come up in your experience, that rather than having to go through this process of, well, is there a conflict and, and all those discussions? If it's automatically someone who is independent counsel, it makes the process maybe more expensive, but smoother. Cause you don't have to go through that, the back and forth dialogue. And you don't set up, you know, another issue for the app, the appellate to bring up before you. That, that's the basis for suggesting.
We certainly, the board certainly understands that, that point of view. And we have, and we have certainly considered that. Uh,
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any, any other questions?
Do we have a decision from the Attorney General specific to Talbot County and this issue?
It's not specific to Talbot County. I believe, as Ms. Milkie said, I believe it is St. Mary's County. And it dealt with, um, their Office of Law representing different agencies. I think in that case, it was the, I think it may have been the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals where one attorney from the Office of Law represented the Board of Appeals and one attorney represented the Planning Commission. And whether there was an issue with one attorney representing a board bef, a body before another body where this attorney in that same office was representing. And the AG said that was not a conflict as long as the appropriate firewalls were in place. Uh, and that they weren't discussing the case and kept their files separate and so forth, which is obviously something we do.
Is there any way that we could get a determination specific to this issue since Ms. Milkie brought it up from the AG's office?
Uh, the, uh, I believe the process is, you can request an AG opinion. I believe first the, uh, the attorney for the public body has to issue a written opinion. And then the, the executive, which in this case would be the council, could request an AG's opinion on that issue. So that would be one, one way to proceed. That wouldn't address the, the instant amendment because the bill, the bill is going to expire. But depending on that and other amendment could always be, or another bill could always be introduced down the road for that specific issue.
How long does that typically take?
I think the last time I did an AG, or did a request for an AG opinion, it took about two months.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, no, no questions. But, but in terms of discussion, you know, I, I've, I'm, I'm hearing, uh, the, the concerns from the board uh, on this in terms of its timeliness and, and its current performance. So I'm also hearing that, uh, that the, the board, it has its antenna up
Right.
um, for potential conflicts and that, and that it has this mechanism if there's, if there's some clear, uh, cause to, to seek outside counsel on a case. And, and so the question before us is whether we need to, to hardwire this into Talbot County Code to, to require that or, or allow them to continue to exercise that judgment.
Or to take the burden off of them for ex, having to exercise that judgment.
I can, we, the board certainly, we do look at a case by case. And if we felt, uh, that there was a, an outright conflict, we certainly, as we did in the one instance, we would seek outside counsel.
I presume.
Recommend that.
I presume the attorneys too might recognize this and, and proactively recuse.
And we did that also at the recommendation. We discussed that with the, uh, with the attorneys. And that was our decision. And that because we were, we were having the attorney from the Short Term Rental Review Board was going to be rep, was going to represent the board at that hearing. And we later determined that that wasn't necessary.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, um, are we ready to call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Yes.
Ms. Haye?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Good job. Good job.
Okay. Okay. So that take, that, that takes care of the two amendments. So we now have Bill Fifteen Forty-Five as amended before us.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and you might, uh, you might see if there's discussion on the, on the whole or if we're ready to proceed to a vote.
Okay. No problem. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Would you like, uh, the secretary to call the, call the roll?
So we're, we're.
We've, we voted on the two amendments, but now we need to vote on the legislation.
So it's amended pursuant to Amendment Number One. And so now you have Bill, the bill as amended with Amendment Number One.
So we're putting the new amendment in.
Amendment Number One has been put in the bill. It is now, you have the bill as amended pursuant to Amendment Number One.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, um, I think we got, yep. Um, we have the, the. Yeah. Yeah.
Motion to reconsider?
Right. Right.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanted to bring forth a motion to reconsider, um, the, how am I going to phrase this? Just give me a second.
You want Mr. Thomas to help?
The resolution, um, for the MAP and the EDUs for Lakeside.
Mm-huh.
That, um, I think that we should, that it really is better to be a two-step process. Um, that, um, the, upon reflection and looking at the report of review that was done after the last hearing, I think it's the proper process for this council to, um, sponsor a resolution that establishes, um, that establishes, how do I put this, establishes that, let me just read my notes here. That there be a resolution for the EDUs as opposed to it being part of the report of review. It's my understanding that the report of review is really a summary of all the resolutions that have been passed prior to the resolution of the report of review. So if the, I don't know that the authority, and I don't understand whether there's any authority, to include something that needs to be passed by resolution in the report of review before it's passed. Does that make any sense?
So, I think, let's simplify this for everybody, okay? So we're revisiting what we did at the last meeting, we had two options.
Correct, so at the last meeting, the options that were, so in MBE's July 21st letter,
Yes.
they presented two options, the council could either address the map issue for the Town of Trap and as part of the report of review, or as a standalone resolution, and also the EDUs and phases for the Lakeside development as a standalone resolution, or as part of the report of the review. And the council voted at that meeting to do them both as part of the report of the review, instead of doing standalone, as a package instead of doing standalone resolutions. So Ms. Milkie's motion to reconsideration is for the council to reconsider that decision. If that motion passes, then it brings the matter back for council discussion, and then the council, there would have to be a new motion made to give direction on which of those options the council wishes to follow.
So for clarity, the resolution has to be done anyway, correct?
Yes.
So we were just trying to combine it, so you would have to draft the resolution prior to the year of the review anyway for us to pass?
Correct.
And we were trying to do it in the same manner, at the same time?
Yes, because all-
That's my understanding.
Right, because all of this information goes in that document ultimately, whether it's done, whether they're done as separate resolutions, or whether they're done as part of this, they're included in the report of the review. The difference is, if you do them separately, we would introduce two separate, you would introduce two separate resolutions at your next meeting, they would follow the same water and sewer plan amendment process, and then come back to the council in October, November, depending on how the schedule works for a vote. If you include them in the draft report of the review, they would, they're in the document, they would go out to the stakeholders as part of the review process. Once all those comments have been received by MDE, the Planning Commission, the Public Works Advisory Board, the public counsel, then there would have to be, at that time, a resolution to adopt the report of the review, and it would again go through the same comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment process. So the idea was really just to streamline it into one document instead of having the report of the review and then two separate resolutions. That are on different timeframes.
So the one resolution was for the report of the review approval, and the second was for the amendment to the comprehensive water and sewer plan? Is that right? Is that the two resolutions that we would be-
No, the two, no, the two actions that MDE is looking for are to amend, to correct the maps that were attached as exhibits, I think A and B to 281, which had properties that were shown with incorrect classifications but weren't part of the resolution, which is why we prepared those maps that showed, the draft maps that are in the report of the review. So one was to adopt, to formally adopt those, which they would be done anyway as part of the approval of the report of the review. The other is to include the language in the plan regarding the EDUs and phases for the Lakeside development, which would be, again, that can either be in the report of the review or in a separate resolution. Either way, you get to the same place and go through the same process. Because they both, whether they're done standalone or as part of the report of the view, they ultimately have to be adopted through a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment resolution.
But the report of review as a document is really a summary of the resolutions that have been passed during the timeframe. And the fact of the matter is that there is no resolution that's been passed on the EDUs and probably on the map, too. So that you're putting the cart before the horse. You have to have, in my humble opinion, upon reflecting at this and looking at the report of review, you have to have the resolution for the EDUs before it can be incorporated in the report of review. That's how I'm viewing this. I don't, as I said, you put the cart before the horse. And I think that some of the commissions have a similar view. And so, you know-
So is that accurate, Patrick?
I think-
Should the resolution be adopted first and then incorporated into the report of the review? And the report of review goes to the, what, the Water Advisory and then the Planning Commission?
And that's what we want. Yes, sir, I am suggesting that the council consider.
I think you can certainly do it that way, it's just that you're going to have, you're going to introduce a resolution. If you do it that way, you'd be introducing a resolution on the 12th that then has to go through the water and sewer plan amendment process, while at the same time, the report of the review has been issued, and that's being reviewed and commented on by the same agencies that are also going to be looking at the separate resolution. So now you have two documents instead of one document, but you can certainly do it that way. I think either way, you're going to get to the same result at the end of the day.
So what is the normal process? What has been done in the past?
What hasn't been done since 2002.
So what was done in 2002? Were the resolutions adopted first and incorporated into the report of the review, or vice versa, or together?
I think it was a whole different process, because we're making a new process.
So there's no process, there's no standard process?
Yeah.
Is that the answer?
I can't say whether there were other resolutions that were, water and sewer plan amendment resolutions that were being considered at the same time the 2002 report of the review was being considered. I don't believe Mr. Clark is here, he would probably be the one best suited to answer that question. I mean, this is certainly a unique issue, and the MDE has said we need to take this action and has given us a timeframe in which to act, so that is a bit of a unique situation.
I feel like I'm just a little bit more comfortable with the last meeting. I hear what you're saying, but I just feel more comfortable that MDE has the whole package right there. They say the whole thing, if, once they send it, you're sending it separately. So just hand with the whole package, so everybody sees it.
But there's no draft resolution in the package, right?
Yeah, the report of review, the report of review is a memorandum of resolutions that have been passed. And what this is proposing is, will we do the report of review, and then as part of the report of review, that will constitute an approval of a resolution for the EDUs or the other issues? And as I said, it's putting the cart before the horse. The normal process is, as I understand it, you have a resolution, then that resolution, if it's passed, gets reported in the report of review. And all we're saying is-
But in my right, everybody's got to have input before we pass anything.
Yes, and it will, they will still go through, regardless of whether you do it separately or you do it as part of the report of the review, you will have to go through the same legislative process to pass it at the end of the day. Because the report of the review, regardless of whether the EDU language is part of, is part of the draft now or not, when it gets adopted, it's going to have to be adopted through a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment resolution, which will go through the same process.
Let me make another point, okay? The report of review is not just about this resolution that we're suggesting be step one, it's about everything. So the report of review sort of obfuscates the focus of what we're trying to accomplish with the resolution about the EDUs. That should be the focus. And then, if it's passed, then it gets put in the report of review, and it's almost like a, you know, like a rubber stamp sort of, or like, well, we've already passed this, and here it is.
It's more pro forma at that point.
Right.
I see what she's saying.
Yeah, and I think, I think we said at the last meeting that the, I think we were hoping to have a resolution to adopt the report of the review by the end of the year. And so I would hope that if a resolution were introduced, if on reconsideration, the council ultimately decides to do the EDU as a separate resolution, that we would have that, and I don't know what MDE's timeline is, I think it's 60 days when they review the amendments once they're adopted. So I would hope that we would have their input back and have a final version of that by the time we're ready to adopt or introduce a resolution to adopt the report of the review.
But having the resolution on the EDUs focuses the public's attention, MDE's attention on what we're trying to do, rather than a whole report of review, which is everything. So it seems to me that it's a more efficient process to just have the resolution first, and then proceed with the pro forma inclusion in report of review.
So we need first to vote on the motion to reconsider, which just brings this up, and then we can, at that point, if that passes, we can consider what the specific direction is to counsel.
Right.
So that, you have that motion on the floor.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I believe a motion to reconsider doesn't require a second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, we're going to go ahead and vote on a reconsideration. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Nay.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
So now, I guess the question is, what form should that direction to counsel take? What is it that we would like separated out in a separate resolution?
I think at our next meeting, we should have a resolution regarding the map and the EDUs, ready for introduction.
The map and the EDUs?
Right.
Okay.
A resolution.
I support that approach.
So is that option two from the last meeting?
That's essentially option two.
Okay.
No, that's option one.
Option one was to include them in the report of the review, option two was to have them as standalone resolutions?
Yeah, option two, the letter of July 21st reads, introduce a resolution amending the comprehensive water and sewer plan to incorporate the updated maps and finalize EDUs.
Okay.
So I'll offer, I'll offer the motion to direct counsel to follow that procedure, drawing up a resolution, amending the comprehensive water and sewer plan to incorporate the updated maps and finalize EDUs.
Second.
Okay. Got that, Madam Secretary? Okay, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Nay.
Mr. Step?
Nay.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
So we'll have those ready for introduction on the 12th, and I'll let MDE know as well.
Okay, no problem, that sounds good.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. All right, now we've got, we've got Clay stuff.
There you go. Good evening, counsel. Under county manager report this evening, we have some board and committee appointments to recommend for your approval. There are three, and all three of them, these are slots dedicated for the Town of Easton to fill. And so we'll be going with the first one, and that is recommending your approval for the Economic Development Commission to appoint Mr. David Montgomery, member of the Town of Easton Council, to that commission.
Is there a motion?
I'll also move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Nay.
The next would be the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and this would be Town of Easton is requesting the reappointment of Mr. Tom Klein.
I'll also move.
And then a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next will be the Tourism Board, Town of Easton is requesting the appointment of Maureen Curry.
I'll move for the appointment of Maureen Curry.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next I'll call Preston Pepper forward, he's your Director of Parks and Recreation. He's requesting that the Department of Parks and Recreation partner with the Town of St. Michael's on community parks and playground grant for Perry Cabin Park. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting council approval to serve as the construction manager for the procurement and installation of ball field fencing at the Perry Cabin Park, which is a county-owned facility. This project is being funded by Community Parks and Playground Grant, which is, which the Town of St. Michael's was granted. The town will reimburse the county up to $100,000 for the project, and Preston is here to answer any questions or add any other detail that may have been missed. Preston?
So this, like Clay said, this is a grant that was applied for by the Town of St. Michael's. We are going to go ahead and manage it in their stead. It's basically putting fences up at the ball fields at the Perry Cabin Ball Field, so.
So the county is not eligible to apply for parks and playgrounds, the town is, but it's taking, they're installing this equipment on county property, and that therefore our role in this?
Correct, so normally a community parks and playgrounds grant is only applied for by a municipality. Counties are not eligible. If there is property that is shared within a town and a county, a town can then apply for a community parks and playgrounds grant, yes?
Very good.
Okay.
So Preston, as the construction manager, is there anything under administrative in this grant that reimburses your time, salary, or anything like that?
No, anything, basically, anything that's going to be reimbursed is just the construction costs and the fences themselves, so this is great.
Nothing administrative?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question, counsel?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you, Preston, appreciate it.
And next I'll call Brian Lucates, Director of Emergency Services, forward. We have a request from the Department of Emergency Services to purchase public safety mobile radios. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Emergency Services is requesting council approval to procure 18 public safety mobile radios from Motorola Solutions by piggybacking on the Maryland State contract at a cost of $78,320.16. Funded, for the, funding for the procurement will be from the 2020 State Homeland Security Program Grant, and no county dollars will be expended. Brian is here to add any additional information or answer any questions. Brian?
Thank you, Clay. There's not a whole lot to add to that, because he really kind of recapped the request. So just to reiterate, it is 100% funded by Homeland Security grant funds, no county dollars, and it's for public safety radios. That's the main point.
Good. Any other questions?
No.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, I'll go ahead and replace the radios. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Counsel, that completes your county manager report for this evening, thank you.
Okay, that's great, okay. Mrs. Morris, we got it?
Mr. Lusher has a list.
Okay, we've got a list, nice.
We do.
Okay.
So for public comment?
Yeah, 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 so we're going to start public comment, and anybody can come up here, we've got a list here. So we time this a little bit, I'm a little flexible, but we give you three minutes, and if you're representing, you know, a business or something, we give you five, so. So, first name?
Our first is Jennifer Dunker of Easton.
Yep.
I'll be short and sweet.
That's okay, okay.
I'm just here to comment on Hulgen's Army.
Okay, okay.
And as a mother of an athlete in Talbot County and a Talbot County resident, I don't need to tell you how special this family is. You heard that tonight, you heard the story. But I've witnessed the strength and determination and sacrifice of this family. You heard it, you heard all of that tonight, so I don't need to go into that. But I can't think of a more deserving selfless wish. In addition, it's an investment in our youth and in our public schools. My Talbot County athlete will not benefit from this, she goes to St. Michael's. Um, my Talbot County athlete will not benefit from this, she goes to St. Michael's, um, but it's important for all of the, the, uh, athletes. Um, I've witnessed the fields in both St. Michael's and in Easton, they're terrible. No, no reflection upon Talbot County Public Schools, they're doing what they can with what they have. Um, so, we know this is a huge investment, but it also has a, um, huge potential for a return on investment, not only in the lower maintenance cost of a turf field, um, but also in the rental income, as, um, Ms. Hawley mentioned. Um, so this request is about a partnership. Um, we've been out there already, as you heard Jen say, we've been knocking on doors, we've been looking for, uh, sources of income. We were directed to you, you guys, um, and Parks and Rec are the ones with access to these grants, so we need your help. Um, but we wanna work with you, we wanna work hard too, we wanna raise, you know, as much funds we can, so, um, I thank you for the support that you've given them tonight, and just, um, let's keep this in the forefront and keep the momentum going.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next up is Terrence Bernard.
Good evening. Uh, my comment tonight is on, uh,
Terrence, can you, can you, can you tell everybody who you are, please?
Terrence?
Yep.
Bernard?
Yep.
Easton, Maryland, Dutchman's Lane, hillside town.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, my comment tonight is on, uh, RCV, ranked choice voting. I advise do not use that in Talbot County. It's not a one-person, one-vote system. It's not good for independents, Democrats, or Republicans. It's a tiered system to vote, it's difficult to teach voters how to use the system in the first place, where you have a problem getting poll watchers, poll judges. It's gonna be costly, cause you're gonna have to hire persons to train how to vote. There's gonna be updates and maintenance on the electronic system. And if you'd like information, there is the Maryland Voter Integrity Group. Uh, contact their head is Robin Sacks, R-O-B-Y-N-S-A-C-H-S, three zero one, two three zero, zero zero four five, extension two hundred. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Jack Kilborn.
I'm also gonna keep it pretty short and, uh, sweet, so. Hello, my name is Jack Kilborn, and to give you some background on me, I am a two-sport athlete playing lacrosse and soccer at Easton. I'm the captain of the lacrosse team, and we've had some success over the past two years, winning back-to-back regional, uh, champions, and winning the Bayside Championship last year. My position is goalie, which is gravely affected by the type of ground that I play on. My job is to keep the ball out of the goal, uh, consistently, changing from grass to turf, uh, forces me to change the way that I play. Playing in the stadium throughout these past few years, um, uh, creates like, I create divots where I play, and those divots can affect multiple other sports, not just lacrosse. And, uh, at the beginning of each season, uh, the grass does not come in yet, so the entire field is just straight brown. So it, it is quite embarrassing, it doesn't reflect our, uh, warrior pride. Also, the sidelines, there are drains, so there's big holes on the sides. They have to put cones over, because it's kind of a hazard to play on. And I've personally seen a ref trip and fall in one of those, and luckily he wasn't hurt, but I feel like in future, some refs might not be as lucky to not get hurt from that, cause I've seen a lot of refs be kinda old, so. It's a, it's a kinda funny. Playing on these conditions, playing on the fields with these conditions now show our warrior pride. Building a new turf field can give Easton a fresh new look, uh, and safer for our students, athletes, as well. Please consider these factors as you vote, uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and next up is Emily Curry.
Hi, I'm here in support of Elgin's Army, um, my name's Emily Curry, I'm a senior at Easton High School. I play soccer in the fall and lacrosse in the spring. Um, I'm here to talk about why turf would benefit our school. We here at Easton High School are disadvantaged without having a turf field for many reasons. For example, every time we get any amount of rain, practices, games have been canceled, and some never rescheduled in the past due to the fields being too wet. If we had turf, we wouldn't lose practice days or games canceled, because all games are basically allowed to be played on turf, even in a downpour. Once practices canceled outside, we have inside practice, which is pretty useless, and gives us a disadvantage to the other schools in our Bayside Conference. Queen Anne's, Ken Island, Stephen Decatur, all who have a turf field are able to continue their practices regardless of conditions, which result in a more efficient practice every day for them, unlike us. A moment that has really affected me personally was this past year at a lacrosse game at our stadium, when the lines on the field were barely noticeable, especially our restraining line. They were mis-marked, and the refs had to stop the game and demand cones at the line. If we had turf, our lines would be permanent, and we wouldn't have to worry about the, the mis-marked of lines. I feel like a lot of people think this is normal, because only a select school, select amount of schools on the eastern shore have turf. But schools across the bridge who have at least one or two turf fields at their school for their athletes don't compare the standards here. The mains of the field makes it seem like the school doesn't care about our athletics enough, although we have the same amount of determined athletes at Easton as Queen Anne's, Ken Island, and Stephen Decatur, who are able to play on turf every day. Next year, Jack and I, as well as many other people in our school in the past and present, are going off to play sport at the college level. We will be facing people who only know playing on turf their whole lives. I feel that going into college, I'm already at a disadvantage coming from playing on grass fields my whole life, to making the jump to playing on turf every single day at college. Considering the game is so much faster played on turf, we're already at a disadvantage. In conclusion, getting a turf field will not only be making Elgin's wish come true, but also furthering Easton High School's athletics for years to come, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and next up is Jay Kilborn.
Hello. I'm actually speaking on behalf of three people, including myself. Uh, first, Matt Griffin, he's the, uh, head varsity coach, um, at, at the high school. Uh, his, his comment to me was, hey, I'm all in, so he, he absolutely is in support of this. Um, I know that, uh, that he's preparing our, our boys for a game tomorrow over in Annapolis, so he could not be in attendance. I also got a note here from, uh, from Dennis Keenan, he is the, uh, the men's head, uh, lacrosse coach. His note says, uh, the boys lacrosse team is honored that Elgin has decided to use her Make-A-Wish Foundation gift to be a turf field for the students at Easton High School, to benefit them for generations. The coaches and players will try to make this dream wish come true for Elgin. This gift will benefit EHS students and other organizations, especially youth, to fulfill their dreams. We want to thank Elgin and her family for this selfless opportunity. All right, that's a funny comment, but leave that alone. Um, so that's, that's, uh, two of our head coaches, um, who, who play on the field, um, and have, and have been a part of the Easton community for, for decades. Um, and then, then, as, as far as my comments, um, good evening, my name is Jay Kilborn. I live on the Talbot side of, of Y Mills, my three children all attended, um, Chapel, Easton Middle School, and then Easton High School. Um, in May, my oldest graduated from South Carolina. Uh, this past weekend, my, my middle child, we dropped her off at Duquesne, and my third child, well, you just heard him speak. I'm proud of that kid. Um, we made, our Y Mills are home for the past seventeen years, and we love it here. We all feel lucky to call Talbot, Talbot County home. You know, just the other day, I overheard a local visitor tell a local merchant, or pardon me, I heard, overheard a visitor tell a local merchant how a sense of peace comes over her whenever she crosses that bridge. And I thought to myself, how cool is it that, that we live in such a community? And I'm, I'm sure all of you have overheard those comments, or feel that same way. You know, this is a really, really special place to live. Now, over the past seventeen years, I've been really lucky to coach my kids, along with hundreds of other local kids, from T-ball, Talbot Soccer, Talbot Lacrosse, Dark Horse Lacrosse, and now the JV team over at the high school. I've been really lucky to get a front row seat, watching our youth grow. Now, I also volunteer at the SOS at the high school, and I'm working on my, uh, my third after-grad committee. I've spent countless hours on fields all across the eastern shore, the western shore, up and down the east coast. I've had numerous conversations about all that Talbot County has to offer, and every season I've coached, without fail, I have at least one conversation with a parent or an opposing coach, asking why the county does not have turf fields. You know, you, you've heard reasons upon reasons upon reasons, and I'm sure we've all witnessed it ourselves. You know, the, the benefits of having a turf field, and for reasons unknown, we don't have that, but hopefully things are about to change. From the maintenance to the reliability in all types of weather, to preparing our kids to be more competitive, both down in the future, turf fields make sense. I've looked into the concern about increased injuries. With all that I've read, I feel confident that these new turf fields, players have no, are no more injury prone than on grass. I've been reading and reading and reading about this, cause I wanted to be able to, to offer that, cause, to be honest with you, I was a little bit hesitant myself. But with the technology of the new turf fields compared to grass fields, there's virtually no difference in the, in the amount of injuries that are being, that are being, um, caused out there. Now, I think there was someone here, um, who also thinks this is a place that is very, very special to call home. So much so, that when faced with an almost unimaginable personal challenge, she somehow finds a way to flip the script and turn the focus onto something that will benefit our entire community for years to come. However, this will only happen if we are able to find the will and the path to make this special place even more so. We have amazing and self, selfless youth in our presence, some are here in front of you. And I can tell you, I've watched these kids grow, and could not be more proud. We have some amazing kids coming through our systems, okay, we've got some of the best watermen, we've got the best farmers in the country are coming through here, we've got kids going to the Ivies, you know, we've got kids playing in D-one, D-two, and D-three sports. We have some amazing youth here, and it is just unreal to watch these kids grow. You know, right now, right over on Aurora Street, there's a kid who is an All-American lacrosse player. Walk in the halls of, of Easton High School, one of the best lacrosse players in the country, right here. Okay, we've got some amazing, amazing kids, we need to support them. Okay, I believe it is our responsibility to help them be all that they can be. And because of this, I ask you to support our cause and guide us as we go through the process of getting a turf field at the high school. We fully expect this to be a process, and somewhat challenging at times. I ask that you support our efforts, that you help us set up the steering committee, and that you be responsive and forthcoming when we have direct questions. I thank you for giving me a few moments to speak in front of you, I truly appreciate it, and look forward to, uh, to many more.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, next is Mike Hawley.
I'm Mike Hawley, I'm Elgin's father. Uh, I spent a lot of time in the military, and nothing is official until the campaign shirts.
Thank you.
Next, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can begin here while they work on this, uh, as I said, my name is Mike Hawley, I'm Elgin's father. My job tonight is to summarize the evening and to also shed some light on why the big push. You've already heard all the best reasons as to why this works for Talbot County. It levels the playing field for the kids, it has possibilities for economic development and growth for our community. These are great reasons, but let me tell you why the Hawleys have hitched our wagon to this horse, the community. Jen and I were raised in a very small town in upstate New York. Uh, we then spent twenty-plus years in a military community. We've known small and tight-knit all of our lives. We all started where everyone else does, right here. Your child's first it, when they find that first it. Uh, she grew, as did her teammates. Three, four. Uh, the adults also grew. We went from awkward conversations in the Parks and Rec league, uh, to substantial relationships as we looked at entering the high school years. On the eighteenth of August, twenty twenty-one, a little extra foundation was added to this already strong group. I had returned from Johns Hopkins to give the girls an update about Elgin. After what they had witnessed, I felt I should at least try to bring them up a little bit. I wanted to give them the old keep your chins up and keep working hard speech. Uh, my intention was to inspire them. Uh, but for the last five days, I had been on a rollercoaster ride that no parent should ever have to be on. When I left E, I've gotta say, I was at a loss to be inspirational. As I pulled into the Easton High School parking lot, I was surrounded by our friends from all those years. And as they read my face and I updated them, we all knew that we were not in the clear yet. E couldn't talk or stay lucid for more than two minutes at a time. Next slide. KKI needed twenty minutes for her to be admitted into the rehab. My news was neither inspiring nor uplifting. Turns out, the girls were holding all those cards. As the adults made our way from the, onto the field from the parking lot, this is what we saw, and I don't know if you can see in that picture, and know it has not been doctored, that is a rainbow. So as I approached, this is what I approached to. Uh, next slide. As I talked to the girls, their energy and positivity was contagious. They had posters for E that they had made for her recovery room, not just Easton Field Hockey, but field hockey teams from all over the shore, to include St. Peter and Paul's, St. Michael's, Queen Anne's, and even her travel league had all put care back packages together. I took the posters and cards up to E's room, I was so excited to get them there, and I arrived about six AM the next morning. Jen had informed me that not much had changed. We removed the recovery room on the east side of the hospital, so I remind, I, I, so as I arrived that morning, the sun was overtaking the room, and after six days of no sleeping, we were less than enthused. Until we broke out the first poster. The sun was hitting the warrior orange, and the colors were so intense. As soon as we showed Elgin, she grabbed the corner, and her eyes were locked on the color. My wife, the psychology instructor, then switches into brain mode and wants to know, how's my girl's brain? She asked Elgin to point herself out among the girls in the picture. Elgin pointed to herself on the poster. She then asked, do you see Emily? She picked out Emily. How about Ella, and once again, Elgin's hand moved to the correct picture. The doctors had come in the room during this time, and I explained what was happening. I did not want to interrupt their rounds. They encouraged Jennifer to continue. Elgin had recognized her teammates, colors, and had been responsive now for ten minutes, and would be for some time more. If the girls had not made these posters, who knows how long the same process would have taken. The eastern shore community came together and snapped E back. That's who we want this field for, not just the school, not even the girls who've made all this happen. Many have already graduated or are in their junior and senior years at this point. This is for all the weekend warriors that became an army and are prepared to stand together when times get tough. No one gave up on us, and no one gave up on Elgin. This is what was given to me, six days after seeing nothing but blank stares and silence. We had E back, and the eastern shore field hockey had delivered her to us. As we've, next slide. As we have, thank you. As we have said in the past, anything is possible if we stick together. That is why I'm out of uniform, wearing this shirt, this is our Parks and Rec, and that's what it states on the back. Please, help us make this wish come true, and help the Hawley family and Elgin's Army reward the community that helped make a huge difference. I'd like to thank the council for your time, all of Elgin's Army for your continued support, and most of all, my daughter for her inspirational selflessness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, and we also have, uh, Mary Brannick, I think it is.
I was just gonna make sure Mike had enough.
Oh, okay, understood, thank, thank, thank you, uh, so that's, that's it for the list who have signed up in advance?
Okay, okay, so, um, so. Okay, okay, so, um, so anybody's welcome to come on up here and, and, and tell us who you are, and, and have a few minutes, if you'd like.
Hello.
All right.
I'm Kim Givensnep, and I am the coach of the EHS varsity field hockey team. I was not there the day that, um, I was not there the day that changed Elgin's life, and I unfortunately was not able to see her play field hockey in the goal. My daughter's a little younger, so I wasn't quite watching that level at that time. I heard stories about her, though, and know that she played with passion and grit. I had the pleasure of meeting Elgin when she was returning to school from her aneurysm. I'm also a speech therapist for Talbot County Public Schools. I was immediately in awe of this young woman and her determination. Sitting in an IEP meeting can be very intimidating. There are administrators, there's teachers, therapists, and, and more, all sitting at a conference table, discussing your strengths and weaknesses, without sugarcoating any of your abilities. The job of the IEP team is to create a plan so that children with disabilities can access the general education curriculum and be successful in school. Elgin sat through this meeting and provided input to her success plan. She was determined to get back to school with as few accommodations and services as she could. She did not want to get speech therapy. She was ready to be independent and on her own again. I have gotten to know Elgin these last two hockey seasons, as she's been the team manager and supporter of the EHS field hockey team. She comes to all practices and games, and has a positive attitude, and provides insight to our current goalies. She's excited when the team wins, and she cries tears when they lose the big games. She has to watch from the sidelines every day with a smile and positive words to her teammates, knowing that she can't be out there. When I heard what Elgin's wish was for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, I actually got chills and tears sprung to my eyes. What a selfless wish. I want everyone to think of themselves at fifteen, sixteen years of age, and imagine being granted one wish after a life-threatening event. You could wish for anything, a trip to a place you only dreamed of going, or meeting your favorite celebrity. I mean, this wish is for you to experience pure happiness after you've endured a life-changing event. How many of us can say that we would wish for something that was for others? How many of us can say that we would, would use that wish for people that we don't even know? How many of us can say that we would use that wish for something that we could never use? I know that my fifteen, sixteen-year-old self would not have thought like that, but Elgin did. She selflessly wished for a turf field, for not only her field hockey friends, but for all the athletes at EHS. She wants to leave a legacy, and she wants her classmates to reap the benefits. Uh, it seems like a no-brainer to me. Talbot County is way behind the times when it comes to youth sports. Most counties around us have at least one turf field for their youth. It's truly detrimental to our young kids that they cannot, and they cannot keep up with the competition on the grass fields that we have. We have a lot of talented athletes in this county, and we need to show them our support. Um, I'm not sure of the cost and logistics of putting in a turf field, I just know that there's a young woman standing in front of the county who wants to leave a legacy, um, and I am asking the coun, council tonight to give her a hundred percent support in getting this wish granted. I appreciate your time, and hope that we can all rally around Elgin and show her the support that she gives to her teammates every day on the hockey field. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um... Okay, anybody else like to come up? You're welcome to come up. Don't be scared, come up and say anything you'd like. Okay.
I'll be up there as well.
Huh? Come on up and say something. You sure? Okay. All right, all right, well, okay, so we'll sort of move on. That was great. Okay, next, uh, coming to the end here is this council comment. Um, you want to start off, Mr. Step?
Sure,'d love to.
Yep, yep.
Uh, again, I just want to reiterate, uh, I, I don't, is El, Elgin's, she's, is she back there?
Back there.
No, she's still back there. Thank you again for, for telling your story. Mike, Jen, thank you. You know, everyone, ladies, gents, thank you, guys. It, it means a lot. Um, a, as a field hockey dad, I, I get it, right? As, as a, as a dad of two athletes, I get it, you know? Mine wouldn't benefit from this either, but just the, the fact that, you know, the fact that you take this wish, Elgin, and, and want that to go to the community, it's, it, it, it means volumes. It, it really does. So, again, I, as I told you before, you, you'll have my full support in this endeavor. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing what, uh, what we can do as a county, what the public, what the public can do, uh, that, that public-private partnership thing, I, I, like you, like you said before, I mean, good things can happen when we, when we put our minds to it, so...
Yep.
Thank you all, I'm sure all, all of the, uh, young ladies, a lot of you I know and have played with my daughter in field hockey. Um, you know, I'm sure you could probably find better things to do with your Tuesday night, uh, some, but, uh, I, I, I know every single one of you would not, would not have anything better to do than but, but to be here to support Elgin under caution. So thank you for that, thank you for your time, and, uh, let's, let's see what we can do.
Okay, Mr. Lesher.
Uh, you know, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, uh, but after the patience that all of, uh, uh, those present have shown in getting to the end of this meeting, um, I do feel obliged to say something. Uh, I, I, um, counsel citizenship and the community merit badge for the scouts, and there's a requirement for that merit badge, uh, that asks the scout to talk about how one person can make a difference. We've s, we've seen that tonight.
Well said. Ms. Milkie?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, you know, we see so much on the news about how our society is coming apart, and we're, um, descending into violent groups and, um, just a lot of turmoil. And it is so heartwarming to see you all, and how you've come together as a community and helped, and you are really mentors for the community and for others who will come behind you to do as you've done. And it's, it's just, it just warms my heart to hear you all, and to hear what you've done. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Milkie.
And I'll echo those comments. As I said earlier, Elgin, when you were up here presenting, just to see you being courageous and the determination that you have to be selfless, basically, um, and want something for others that you won't even be able to take advantage of, but you care about the community that much, that you want your Make-A-Wish to be something that helps someone else. So, thank you for coming in tonight, and I thank everyone that came here with you, your Army, uh, because we certainly stand with you, um, in helping with this turf field. So thanks again for your grit and determination and being courageous.
Thank you. Well, like my colleague said, um, this is the best Army I've seen in a long time, that's for sure. And, um, you know, it's, it's a special night. Uh, I, I mean, I, I didn't know your full story, I knew a little bit about it, but, um, you are a special young, young lady, that's for sure, and we wish you the best. And I, I think you should go away tonight to, 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 to sort of feel that you, you've got a council behind you. And, um, you know, that's, that's pretty special. And, um, whatever we can do, um, to help you move forward, anything that you need from us, 'cause you, you, you really are special, all of you. And I, I really appreciate the school, um, means a little bit to me, 'cause I went there myself, you know? So, um, you know, I wish you all the best, and we're always here for you. So you come here anytime, okay? I know you'll be back next year, too. So you come back and, uh, you know, hopefully we can make things, uh, your wish come true, that's for sure. Mr. Lesher?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twelfth, beginning at five o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at three thirty PM, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Monday, September eleventh, beginning at eight thirty AM, the county council and all municipalities will be holding a ceremony to commemorate the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one. The event is open to the public and will be held at the intersection of West and Dover Streets in Easton, with a rain location of the Talbot County Free Library Branch here in Easton. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate you guys coming.